Everyone is here this evening, so that's good. Entertaining the motion to approve the agenda. Thank you Jeff, what do you want to do? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Visitor comments. Three visitor comments. We're done, we'll go under special recognition.
Hey, good evening members of the board, uh, community. Tonight we're gonna recognize our, uh, our safe and welcoming committee, uh, the work that was done this summer with our, Alice training, we went through all our emergency procedures, we also, um, onboarded our resource officer and then the welcoming piece two, um, the work during workshop, well, sorry, bootcamp where we, um, tried to make it a little more welcoming for all students. So I was marrying while everybody in the back row there, and then the work of naturely helped out with school safety. I just wanna say, I feel like, uh, the concerted effort to make our campus even a little safer and a little more welcoming was, was no idea. So I want, I thought we recognized them as, as, um, this committee.
Two little minutes of the following meetings, August fifteenth, twenty, twenty-two, three days.
I'll make motion.
Thank you Zach, what was that? Do you write my thing? Ted, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Certain improved claims, compensation, and gifts. Small call.
Uh, so here's summary of the bills, we got Drew here this evening, we're going through a few of them. Tonight the chair, members of board are gonna be approving two million seven hundred sixty thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars ninety-one cents, and accepting donations and gifts in a total of thirty-three thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, Drew, you wanna touch anything in specific for us?
Um, most of the interim checks that we wrote, it's a lot of stuff kind of, uh, for orders that, uh, got placed towards the end of the summer, getting ready for the school year, um, it's been pretty busy and chaotic getting all the orders for everybody, all the classrooms and stuff, uh, to get up and running for the school year, um. Most of the stuff, there's really anything out of the ordinary, it's kind of, um, usual kind of things. The, uh, one check for, uh, it's dated June thirtieth, that's the, hopefully the last check that we have relating back to last fiscal year. But I guess it kind of depends on whatever trickle in here in the next couple of weeks. All the checks that we're gonna be writing tomorrow, um, it's kind of just the usual things. I don't think there was anything that really, um, was too out of the ordinary or unusual.
I think key takeaway is, uh, audit starts here in two weeks, it'll be all,
Next week.
Next week, start all week, so we closed off the books on FY twenty-two. And, uh, you know, you can see the bills and then you can see, uh, just over here. Our investment report, really no change there either. Just your, uh, we did go up by what, half a percent though, Drew?
Uh.
On our interest rate? I think, I think that's what you shared. Half a percent on our interest rate, so that's great, so you can see. Yeah. Okay. So you see what we're drawing interest on is five million four hundred four thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and seven cents, so you can see our actual interest is forty-five, ninety, eighty-seven. And then, you know, it's so early in the fiscal year, uh, you'll start to see, you know, expenses, revenues, so we're, I think the big thing that's gonna go next is on the consent agenda, I don't know of anything, well, there is nothing you're gonna approve in the consent agenda that's not already built in the extra, under your budget, so. I don't know, there's no anomalies at this point.
Yeah, I know, it might look a little funky on the expenditure report, there's, uh, one line item that's at a hundred percent of the year-to-date balance, and that's just our insurance, so it's just a one-time, when, once, uh, your payment, and so, um, other than that, I don't think there's anything that's too unusual.
Superintend support. Won't be that quick, uh, overall, from our last meeting, we're up, uh, what, we're up six Ma students and three Wen students, and then I had another student today, and then I think they just took another three students in. And so that was, uh, so Friday, so our total enrollment was twelve seventy-five, up from twelve sixty-nine, then we had forty kids at Wen, up from thirty-seven. And you can see our early childhood, we're pretty much maxed out at our, our head start in our, sorry, our preschool, uh, school readiness classes. Uh, tonight you're gonna approve the consent agenda, and a lot of these are, remember our last meeting was the third week of August, so there was a lot of things that happened workshop week, the chair of events up and running, so it might look like a lot of names, which it is, and then it changes fast, everybody comes back, they're putting their paperwork over the summer, lane changes, so you're approving that. We had some resignations, you know, this, I think it's really important that she had resigned, because she was a practitioner, she's going to become a professional. I had a heart attack that day, because it was like the second week of school, second, this is the first week of school already. Uh, but we've had a few changes, we may have hired some paras, which you're, you're gonna see tonight, lane changes, and then we have one termination that's gonna come forward. Tonight we're gonna have the safe and welcoming committee, they're in the back there, they're gonna present here in just a few minutes, uh, tonight we're gonna approve the levy. You know, what you're doing is, you're gonna approve the, uh, uh, initial levy, so it can go to the auditor, so they can put it on people's tax notices, then you're gonna make the official rep, you're gonna pass the, uh, levy officially at your December meeting, but after the truth and taxation. We also have the mental health professionals contract, we're gonna take a look at tonight. Um, this is just head start, we, you know, we just, we, we have an agreement already, they just pay four hundred dollars a month to rent, based on Starbucks School. You'll see a meeting about, uh, campus and then election results here on November, yeah, seventeenth, seven thirty in the morning, that's like a ten-minute meeting, except the campus results. And then, um, we have to just approve our assurance of compliance for MBE. Go from there, and then tonight we're gonna look at, uh, some items to take off the books, but it takes board approval, there's really, I don't know, there's, there's not a lot of value to these items, but, you know, technically for the auditor, we need, we need to have board approval to put on our auction. We're gonna have a closed session at the end of this meeting for my evaluation, then you'll back up. Uh, big pieces that we're working on right now is just that, uh, kinda working on backwards, just a regular board meeting, truth and taxation, December, September thirty on the nineteenth, uh, you can pencil in, that's usually our holiday party, so we usually, we have truth and taxation usually on six-thirty, board meeting at seven, and we usually adjourn by seven forty-two. And then we have our little celebration, uh, so that's December, we didn't put a workshop session in December yet. And then you can start to see, mapping out our half-day staff development, elections, uh, we're gonna have actually a program, letters are already, you know, I think they've already gone out. Regular board meeting, a lot of events in October, I think key takeaway is, uh, our RAS, people are gonna go to the open house on the twenty-fourth, there's a board forum that night, so, the open house is at five, so we'll be back to that. We hosted a board forum, so you can see that information, but that's got onto everybody running for the board, we've already posted some questions. Uh, Ted Hills agreed, uh, to moderate it, so that'll be here, we broadcast live on our Minnewaska Laker Live, so you can watch that. Yeah, we have district advisory before our next board meeting, so on the seventeenth we'll come together, we'll eat dinner, and then have our district advisory going into our board meeting. And we have a bunch of conferences lined up, because I think, uh, Friday mid-quarter or next week?
Friday.
Friday mid-quarter. And we'll actually have, uh, five weeks of schooling. It's hard to believe, but yeah, we have five weeks and already, we'll attempt to have parent, Indian ed, uh, advisory, uh, usually we don't get anybody to show up, but we'll, we'll attempt to have that again. We did, we've had one in, or in five, so, and then Scott, because we, uh, have our new teacher mentorship group coming up. Our communication off of homecoming, obviously it's homecoming week, so, uh, Friday we have a party in the patio, so the board members are available to, to help serve.
What time is that?
I think it's, uh, five thirty, six thirty. There is a parade that kicks off. I got all the homecoming people here, you can see, yeah, we have a parade on Friday, there's the round. Parade at one o'clock in Ludwig, and we're gonna just take the water around, right behind the elementary, come down Barson's Park, and pickup's gonna be here. Anything else on the homecoming you wanna mention? Grownationalists this afternoon, Evie and Queen, it's all great, Big Dance, it's gonna be wonderful. Lot of activities this week. See, we dress like gab salmon today, so it's pretty disappointing for the board. We're having some gab, you were in the gym, you said?
Yeah, I've never honestly done this before.
You know, I mean, I think the common theme is we're short some parent professionals, we continue to, I think we hired one last Friday, we've pulled, we look, I think we're looking for another maybe practitioner. Uh, there's official notification that had to go out, just so everybody knows, that there had to be official notification that had to go out to everybody. So there's administrative checklist, and just a formality for employees, there's a bunch of, you know, pieces, so. That's kind of the summary, I'd say it's suffice to say, we're short a few staff, storey teams full, kitchens are full, short a couple of paras, could use another practitioner. Uh, we have some staff returning from some, uh, paternity and maternity leaves. Uh, I don't know of any major instances in any buildings. Uh, I'd say the big thing for building grounds, uh, the water softener system here at the school is, is very old and decrepit, it needs major replacement. We've been living along, uh, so we contacted Eco Water to come and talk about solutions, so we're kinda working through that piece. We're working on snowmobiles, just to make sure we can do as much as we can here, we're obviously preparing for winter. I don't know, anything else I'm missing, principals? Major? I think we're off to a good start. That's kind of the border part, I don't know of any major things we've worked into the piece. Yeah, I mean, I know this, that there's, um, there's some HVAC units, uh, above the auditorium and the music speed choir room that are not, they need some major attention. Um, we did get work, gonna get started on the lights, the lights in the auditorium, we get that going, there was a per disorder of smidges, that's getting done. Uh, we have a group coming on Thursday to talk about the HVAC units in elementary school, but we really do feel like these are more priority, the ones in that muncher school are probably a little bit self-induced. Well, part of it is another computer system, so unless Community Ed actually enters it and they use Community Ed, because a lot of them have keys and come in the back door, the HVAC just turns off after a certain period.
Yeah.
But I would also say it's not, it's not, they're, they're failing units. They fixed one over the office, they fixed one over the gym. I'd say a common theme is that a lot of HVAC units on this roof are coming to end of life. Yeah, so. I think that's the big gist of it.
Okay, so. I will entertain the motion to approve the claims of the counts to one two-point-seven million and change.
I'll make motion.
Thank you Angie. I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
That's abstain.
Still carries. So you approve a resolution. Ninety-twenty-six, twenty-two, accepting donations to the school district.
So we're gonna accept donations totaling three, thirty-three thousand two sixty-eight eighty-five cents. You can see, uh, our donors, we wanna just generally, you know, thank them dearly for their donations. So you see, different organizations, uh, made donations.
I entertain a motion to accept the donations of thirty-three thousand two sixty-eight eighty-five. Thank you. Justin?
I'll second.
Do you write my thing?
I'll just add one piece before you take action. I would just share that, you know, I, as this year we are, people do have to pay for school meals, it's not a Minnewaska deal. This federal government's not subsidizing, uh, just food meals, so I would point out, like, you know, Silver Radio Tower or the cell towers in the back corner of the school. You know, that, that one was built like four years ago, and there's one that works for Starbucks. Um, and we do that, and we also, um, you know, the debit cards for Eagle Bank, that's that check you saw on the paper, it's four thousand eighty-five forty. Um, that goes right into our angel account, so if you, anybody knows anybody, if they're watching online, or you know people, if we need to come up to you and like, you know, some tough times, we, we do have a policy, you have a policy, that allows us to, to help people offset some meals, we have a family in crisis right now that we're helping supplementing. We have some early childhood scholarships to reward for early childhood. But I just wanna point that out, so you know where this money, some of these donations go. So we've coded in the angel account, um, it's grown over the years, so, uh, I don't wanna put, Drew, you should know the exact penny. I would say, last time I was aware of it, it was, it was over eighteen thousand dollars.
We're pretty early in the year, so seeing food service in our areas, it's pretty, you know, that, that won't really hit till later, right?
Well, we get on it right away.
Well, no, you're, you're, are you, are you proactively looking at those?
So if somebody, Mary works with us very closely, so they present, they'll share with a few, but if we know our families in need, like I, I know four or five that are already about to my intention, we take out the angel account, so we, we, so we have a one family that we're, we front lawyer, we're gonna pay September and October for them, they can reapply at the end of October. There's some major surgeries going on in their life, but we're just gonna help out, but, there's a lot of people know that, that angel account is up. Look at donations, uh, for the end of your tax season, you can always do that, but that's been pretty popular.
I. Entertain a motion, Justin, do I have a second?
We already did, I think we did that right.
For the.
We just need to vote.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yep.
The same people again, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
As previously mentioned, on the consent calendar, you know, these are all built in budget, so I'm not overly concerned. Uh, we're probably still actually four or five of the boys short, what's built in budget.
Entertaining the motion for the consent calendar. Motion to approve. Thank you Jeff, second?
I'll second.
Thank you Zach, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both, motion carries. On to, what's that? Presentation. At the safe and welcoming meetings.
He came up quick, huh?
You want us to come up, friend?
We don't have.
Oh, yeah, right over here. I thought, I thought what I would do is,
You're on the camera.
I thought I would.
Is it on camera? Maybe we should just stay back.
Block us. You can block us from me.
Trust me, when I see a film, I, yeah. Uh, I thought what I would do is, this dream worked, unfortunately, two years ago we, uh, lost two dads, a lot of students in our, in our district. Um, but I, I thought I would bring, there's a group of, uh, fifteen, sixteen that come together routinely every month, um, to work around goal number four, so you, you know, it's not just, you know, we have people that, in teams that work specifically, not just school employees, counties. You wanna talk a little about the makeup of the group, Mary?
Yeah, that's on my list.
But I just pulled up an agenda so you can see things we discuss and things we do, so.
Okay, so yes, I'm Mary Walsh, um, the school social worker, and.
Not just, not Mary Walsh.
The Mary Walsh.
Okay, sorry, the, the only, yeah. Um, so our safe and welcoming committee meets monthly, like Chip said, and it's made up of the administration, um, the counseling, the mental health staff, administration from all buildings, so Susan and, and, um, the elementary as well as this building. Um, our counseling staff, mental health, SROs, some community partners, such as like public health, human services, someplace safe, yeah. So, um, Jeanne Peterson, who collaborated with the another one. So we basically, like Chip said, on the strategic roadmap, um, that's one of the goals, and we just talk about concerns that we might have with, um, some safe and welcoming issues, or some weaknesses, try to problem solve those things. Um, any new presentations or assemblies that we wanna have here, or at any of our buildings, has to go through this committee to make sure, you know, we have references and all that, um, and then any new initiatives we might wanna bring in, um, like in the past, few years ago, we, we've done different things, you know, we had that, we had Rachel's Challenge, we've collaborated with the Be Kind Committee, um, that kind of came off of Rachel's Challenge. Um, some other goals, well, last year our goals were kind of focused on like bullying and, um, some mental health, well-being kinds of things, so we, um, did, you know, a lot of Be Kind things, we also had, I started, or we started our, um, food shelf for students right here in our building, uh, called the Lighthouse, Sarah, and, um, she wrote a grant, she and I together wrote a grant for that ship grant. That's been really good, um. And then, I'm kinda going, well, last, well, on the strategic roadmap, I don't know which, I couldn't find that on the website, by the way, just, I don't know if it's hidden somewhere or what. But, um, one, I think number three or something is the diversity, inclusion, DEI statement, and so we kinda talked about that last year, how, how can we do more with that, and we started with training staff. Last fall, we had Outfront Minnesota come out and talk, do a presentation with staff on some, uh, like gender stuff, and then, yeah, in intentional training, diversity, equity, inclusion, so we had that training in November, and then about January, we started, started a committee called the DEI Committee, that, um, sorry Nate, we're kinda awkwardly standing right here. So we started that committee last year, and then, and then I'll let you guys talk about more things we did last year, then I think we'll roll back.
Yeah, we'll roll back.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, that's okay, um.
You just make, make sure you release yourself?
Oh, I should, yes, um, I am Hannah Maher, I am the middle school counselor, it's my second year here in the building. Um, so I work from fourth grade through eighth grade, um, but rolling back to safe and welcoming, um, one of the things that Mary mentioned, we worked with the Be Kind activities. So there's that Be Kind Community Group, Margaret Peterson, um, so we collaborated a lot with their crew, they really, um, had some intentional activities for our fifth graders. While there was doing some books, they had some presentations come in talking about, she said that like how the environment relates to, kind of metaphorically relates to us as humans and interacting with others, and planting trees on the Day of Caring with our fifth graders. Um, and then here within the building, we also had our students do a pledge for kindness, so they traced their hand, put it up on the wall, we had it displayed in kind of lobby area for a few months, um, of our kindness pledge, as well as made a district-wide video of students sharing why kindness is important. Another thing that, uh, we focused on was our Laker Wave Maker, that started last year and has continued throughout this year. I'm thinking specifically fourth grade through twelfth grade does Laker Wave Maker, basically it's, um, for staff to nominate students who are making good choices, have that interaction, the names of school model leaders, or who have made, um, a change over time, too, so, uh, I know that there is some positive reinforcement with Laker Wave Makers.
I'm Jen Ring, the high school counselor, um, one thing that happened last year is they, um, actually last year Amanda Algell started doing more mental health awareness. Like every Monday, they did the Mental Health Monday post, and we are gonna continue to do that this year. We also did a week in May that focused on mental health, um, awareness, so kids were aware of some of the signs and symptoms and things that they could do to help them with their mental health. And we also did some fitness challenges for school staff, like a bingo card, um, to kind of focus on staff's wellness, and something that's going to be coming up is, um, a school garden, and so that will be something positive too.
We kind of, we, we kind of do the wellness committee with the safe and welcoming, so that's where that fitness and the school garden comes in, and that all kind of works together with, um, you know, well, just with staff being healthy, too. Some goals for this year, um, we, um, you know, really we wanna focus on a safe and supportive learning environment for all, for all students and staff um, at Minnewaska, so started with, um, the summer hiring the SRO, having the Alice Training, which two really big things. Um, Scott has kind of talked about at the elementary, um, possibly bringing in the Swatch Dags program, which is kind of cool. And, um, that involves getting volunteer, like more male volunteers into the building to help, and that could be, helping in the classrooms, in the hallways, or even on a bus, things like that, um, it's, it's just kind of a cool volunteer way to get parents or adults into the building. And then going back to, um, the DEI committee, um, so we kind of started it last year, did a few things, and then this year we really, um, were thankful to our, um, the building leadership, or the leadership teams to let us have some time at fall workshop to do a, a training with staff on some diversity and inclusion and equity topics, and that went over really well, according to staff, um, I don't know, I, I think, I mean, it went well. We have about fifteen people on our committee, and, um, we're hoping to do a little follow, we didn't get all the staff, because there were, um, some, yeah, CPI, and then, uh, the paras were not there that day, so we like to catch them up, and then, um, do some follow-up at our next couple workshop days, or in-service days.
Yep, um, so we've done some things with staff during workshop week, bootcamp week as well, um, but we also wanted to bring some, how we can do some initiatives with students, we've been talking about what other programs we can bring in for students to focus on kindness and respect as well. Um, so one thing that we've looked at that's just pulling up is Youth Frontiers, um, which is a program based out of the Twin Cities, but they lead like hundreds of retreats around the state every year, and actually across the country. Um, so right now, we're inquiring about a courage retreat with seventh grade and a respect retreat with ninth grade, so that might be something that we are going to look further into. Um, there's not an official date of, or it's not officially booked, but we're hoping that that could be an impactful, um, moment for students during their school career, I mean, I even think about when I was in ninth grade, where I grew up, we had our one-day retreat, and it's something that I remembered always, so, um, it's a really special day, and we hope that, that's something we can provide for our students.
Would they go somewhere else for that, or would it come?
It's usually here, um, for our site within our community, um, yep, so it'd be like the whole grade level would experience that, and I think there are some follow-up activities too, so it's not like just a one-day thing, it would be, I think that there is some programming that they can do in their advisory, they can continue the conversations afterwards, so. Um, then another thing that we hope to do this year, or actually one thing that we did, Jen and I went on a, um, did a training, three-day training up in Fergus, at the Southwest, West Central Co-op, based on mental health first aid, and, uh.
Is there any training?
Yep.
Yeah, so. And so, the mental health first aid was an awesome training, and it was an eight-hour training, just like more signs and symptoms of mental health disorders and what you can do to help, um, students, um. It would be a great program for all of our staff to be trained in, it, there was just a lot of discussion and topics that were wonderful. The group of people that were there in Fergus ranged from a couple of superintendents, administrators, teachers, county staff, and so from that training, we, once a month throughout the school year, we are gonna meet on Zoom and kind of talk on like what trends we're seeing in other districts, what we can do to help other districts if they're struggling, um, with di- different mental health um, topics, or even the diversity, equity stuff came up in that training as well, and so we are going to meet once a month, um, that group, and then next June, we have to go back up to Fergus, and so that cohort of people is kind of just gonna be there for each other. We've already seen like in our district crisis that, you know, it would be helpful to have other people that we can reach out and help us, so that was a great experience that Hannah and I were able to go to. Anything else on that? Um, one last thing that is, um, Sophia Watt from Horizon Public Health would like to start, like, a vaping prevention group in our school, and so, um, just some students that maybe would be positive role models, to try to get students, um, to not vape, and so, um, I've kind of been in contact with her to try to get some of those initial things rolling with that, also, she has brought to our attention the My Life, My Quit program, and so that is something that if a student has got caught vaping, it's a program that they could log on, and there would be someone that would help. and there would be someone that would help them through some of those steps to maybe help them with the addiction to vaping. And so that's another positive, I can think that would help our students here in our district.
Okay. Nate, I'm just going to put you on the spot because you're, Nate and Sarah and myself are all part of Safe Welcome too. I thought one thing I would point out too is when you look at our strategic roadmap, we're actually ambassador program, so I know Sarah has an ambassador program for all new students coming in. I know that Nate has meets with every new student himself, with his counselor, walks through that with their teaching staff. Scott has taken over the teacher mentorship program. We have, I'm going to come back to number three, and I want you to just give some highlights on. The Alice work we did, the Crisis Go work we're doing, and then Safe Grounds, Buildings Playground. So we did a walkthrough with psychological part of that was coming through with that, some things that we need to improve on. There are some things on our building campuses that we're, we're trying to get, especially when the mud glass, we've had some busted out windows and shards and kids getting hurt. So kind of, you know, those are pieces to look at. This diversity and equity inclusion, you know, I would say it's safe to say, I don't want to put me on the spot. The number of LGTP plus students who identify, the number has grown. And, you know, if you look at the bottom, I don't care what you believe in, but our district believes in all students. So we're trying to support every kid where they're at, you know, so, you know, I think it's being educated and how we support those students. So we're doing a lot on that, and then intentional support for mental health, so adding mental health practitioners, getting our staff training. You know, I feel like, I just want to bring to everybody's attention, as you look at a lot of kids in crisis, you hear about things are happening. Richfield losing their homecoming early weekend, school shooting. And then Nate, talk to me while, you want to share what we've done?
Yeah.
You know, the one thing is we do have an app that we do use. It's more for the crisis crisis level, so I'd say for the highest level, we have Crisis Go. So it's an app on my phone, if I really want to make people annoyed, I can go on here, and I can smash a glass, and one hundred eighty-two people are going to get a siren blown off in their phone. So it's an instant notification for everybody else Crisis Go. The reason we use that is it's linked into our student information system, so Synergy. So if Hannah were to enroll a new seventh grader today, tonight at midnight, it's going to go into Synergy and upload. It's going to come in, it's going to fill into Crisis Go. So if I have to go sub for, I don't know, Gordy Moller, like I did last year for choir, and I, we had to leave the building, I could actually log in, take attendance, and I would know that new seventh graders in class because we populate. So at the highest level, and it has that red flag chart, all that's built into here. So if I'm a brand new, you know, I'm subbing, I could actually know the Crisis Go and be able to keep track. So I call the W C C L moment, if we leave, and we have to leave, we go over to the Minnewaskas to reunify. If I have all my kids, I could actually take attendance and send passive messages. Now, we are not very good at that yet. I mean, we are not ready to test that, use it, implement it. A lot is just getting all staff back onto using this. So that's the highest level, and, but then we have the prevention and the reaction plan, so I'm trying to.
Yeah, deputy, actually several of us last year, the administrators, Hope County deputies, Starbuck and Lenwood PD, went to a training, Alice training, and so we're all Alice certified trainers, and Deputy Testing and I kind of taken the lead on that. All of our staff have gone through the classroom training, and the entire staff, paras and teaching staff. And then seven twelve teachers have gone through an enhanced lockdown, the old school lockdown of everybody huddle into a corner. That's not what we do anymore. We scatter around the room, we arm ourselves with, with books and items and things like that. So we could potentially counter if we came into a situation. So everybody, everybody in the seven twelve has done the enhanced lockdown. I'll be over at the elementary school on Wednesday to work with the K three, and then Sarah and I are going to get the four eight here within the next couple weeks. So by, by mid-October, all staff will have gone over the first drill, a part of that Alice training. We got approved with the blended learning model as well, so it's taken the stuff that we teach, plus Alice has a bunch of PD through, navigate three sixty, where kids, our staff can watch videos, play them with their, with their, in their intervention and Laker time, and kind of put what we learned in the classroom in play with the, with the videos as well, so we're excited about that. You know, hiring Deputy Testing, kind of going off on the building and grounds, that's been a game changer, absolute game changer. Every morning, he, he makes his rounds, and he's been able to, and he makes his rounds walking around the building, checking the exterior doors, and he's been able to identify some problem areas. You know, there's a, there's a kind of an issue with some of our doors. The pressure that's pushing out coming from the building, and a door that does not necessarily pull behind, it kind of just kind of hovers there, and some of those doors do not close. So we've kind of identified some of those areas that sometimes maybe people that don't specifically go look for those and walk through, we wouldn't catch, so we've identified those, gotten Ethan on board, Mr. Anken on board. So just, it, it, it's, it's been very good having him on board as well. And like I said, he's, he's taken the lead with me with that Alice training, so I'm pretty excited to get that going, working with him.
He also flexed Eric to be at some of our key athletic events or activities. So you normally have homecoming events, and you expect a large crowd, or Osakers comes down, or, you know, Bunsen comes off, or whatever it's going to be. The other piece we're looking at too is, I'm giving till the first November for all my principals to know each other's buildings. So I don't know how much Nate spent time at Winn, or Susan, brand new to our district, gets a chance to go to the elementary. Because you don't know who's going to be in the building that day, so you know where they're going to go. We already spent our redundant radios, they're four fifty apiece, so we're able to get ten. They take a lot to get here, we have some informal communication, but a lot of it's via text. And so we just want to make sure we're connected on some four channels. So SRO here, SRO there, all communication. I think the goal tonight was the whole child from the, hey, from the time you receive here, we welcome you, and we receive you and prepare no matter where you're at, to the support layers of support we have, by having counselors, mental health provided for every student, our referral process, up to the crisis point, where not like emergency safety crisis, but hey, we, we, we have a student that might be injured, or we have, you know, hey, you can bring people in. There's a lot of prevention in, so they do a lot of preventative work. And then you can see some of the workshop work too, the flipping to the, hey, are we a safe, safe campuses? So I require door checks daily, so we check every single door. We've annotated eight doors to be some attention. You know, they'll lock, but you have to pull tight to make sure they lock. We are, we also find dead space in our cameras to make sure we can cover that up. And some of that's really expensive, and so it takes time. We're really lacking camera coverage in our parking lot, and we know that's a weakness for us. But you, you know, we would need to really think about, my personal thing is, you might need to really think about long-term, if we renew our F R I number or something, you know, that's just, that wasn't something that was done when this was built in ninety-one. We didn't have the number of camera systems and things like that, so. And then intentionally training every staff member to make sure we're prepared for the worst potential day here in Minnewaska, so. I just want to reassure everybody in the community, the board, you know, every community hopes it'll never happen, but making sure that we, we're doing a little bit every, you know, every week to make sure we're a little better.
Can I, can I add one last thing with Deputy Testing? He's here at seven thirty, rolling the, rolling the parking lot, going in the backside. And then right at that three o'clock time, he's also in different spots each and every day. And I have had, well, Mr. Anken and I got maybe one warning on a kid revving his engine in the parking lot. But as far as kids speeding, things like that, that has really reduced since, in the last couple years with that presence, so.
Questions on board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Polls twenty twenty-two favorable twenty D levy limitation certification.
So every year, members of board, we set the initial levy. Big thing is, every year we set the max are actually levy dollars, because school has actually gone down. And so I figured this out, this would be less than one percent of one percent, because it's a fifty-two-hundred dollar increase from last year to this year. I think the levy, when they run the numbers, and they gotta let the, you know, the assessor do it, to the auditor, the county auditor. I guess our levy actually went down. You're also getting the tax A credit, it's going to kick in from seventy, or sixty-five, seventy percent. So my recommendation, Nate, is you do what you've always done. You can always reduce it if you're a December board meeting, unless it runs to taxes. But you gotta, this has to be done by thirtieth, so we need to take action, Nate, so we need to sign it tonight, so we can send it off to our county auditor and copy the M D, so I can do the initial tax from some recognition as you approve the max tonight.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion and approve the max.
Thank you, Justin, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Question carries. Your approval of twenty-two to twenty-four Minnewaska Mental Health Provincial Labor Agreement.
Uh, we just worked the language, this is the last group, you'll be approved tonight, it's the professional, and it's a group of four individuals, and you can see in the spreadsheet. It's a three percent, it's a, well, it's a, it's a market adjustment because they're in super high demand right now. And then a three percent the second year, same exact insurance increase as the teachers and the practitioners, as all your other groups. There's longevity there that models the ASB, the practitioners, and a couple of our hourly employees. So yeah, this is ran through the first round committee, so just getting an option tonight, so.
I'll make a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Question carries. Your approval of twenty-two twenty-three collaborative agreement between Essential Communities Action, Head Start, and Minnewaska Area.
We saw a round agreement that authorizes the Essential Communities Action Group to pay four hundred dollars in market rent. We have never increased it, it says stays flat, they already have a built-in budget, but you, you just reached a new agreement with them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Zach, do I have a second?
Here, I have one second.
Thank you, Ted, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
When we go out to see Susan and Winn, we'll get a tour of that facility, but it's pretty basic, that's where Head Start is, in the basement, if you have a minute there.
Request to consider scheduling a special board meeting in Canvas, and then the, we're pretty limited on dates, Ange, you asking seventeen to eighteen?
That's what the auditors would prefer, because it gives them time to verify everything, then they're like, wait a week or week and a half.
So if there's a close election by three votes, and they got a hand count, they can go get it, and then you can ratify it.
Right.
So we're just proposing, I think it's a Thursday at seven-thirty in the morning, is it, Ange? Yeah, Thursday, November seventeenth, seven-thirty. Then we just need a corner, correct?
Yep, we just meet here, for our people, and ratify them.
I'll make a motion to approve that date.
I'll second.
Thank you. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Question carries. Your approval, annual assurance of compliance statement.
Uh, from Alice, you can see here, I'm your human rights coordinator, Mr. Johnson's your town nine coordinator, and Sarah's your five oh four coordinator, and this gets filed M D, so. And then we are coming up for a civil rights audit. We're one of the lucky schools, five in Minnesota. I was told that I likely, I think I have at least ten years left, that it would be about fifteen to eighteen years for the next go-around, so. Knocked out away, but it's, it's busy. They're going to be here for a virtual, virtual interviews on the fifth, and they're going to be out here for a physical interview. Basically, it's making sure kids with disabilities have access to our C T program, and there's no, no hurdles, or follow due process for some rights.
I'll make a motion to approve the assurance of compliance statement.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Zach.
I'll second.
Jeff, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Question carries. Your approval of declaring the list of district items obsolete and placing them on auction. Should have moved to this earlier.
If you want to, tempting side, vote no value. This needs just getting, I think this, this white after fifty-five needs going to shredder. I don't think it's moved in a few years. Seriously, it's a shredder, I mean, nice one. Probably needs to be recycled.
Yes, yes, it's crap.
Floor polish or just obsolete. We have fifty seventeen-inch laundries, if you want to like have a wall in your shop with just TV screens. I think you might have given to us.
They were bad for us. Old for us, and they're really old for you.
You have to give them back.
That was years ago.
So monster, box crusher that OSHA will not allow on its pool property more. Then, you know, if you want to get ripped, there's some like extension drills you have to do now. I, I, I don't know if we'll see two grand from all this, but you're authorized tonight for us to put it on up.
On the auction?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Thank you, Justin, I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Justin's already started bidding, I think.
That's right. I skipped like that.
I skipped.
First reading of all policies, superintendent evaluation.
Yeah, so I think you got a ton of policies, correct? I'll vote, I think it went to the policy committee, was it first reading, so. Do you look good?
Yeah, there was, there was no major changes, so.
Thank you, Zach. We'll put those in the next meeting. I would share, one thing I did not share out earlier is, in my board part, I would just say we have been approached by getting our first advertising on our scoreboards. So we'll read that for the activities committee, and then the board here in October. Uh, they did release tests publicly. I, we're going to prepare a little press release, but I think you should be really proud as board members for staying in person learning, because our test scores show growth, except for science. We're the highest in our little area, definitely the highest in our community. So I think that's important to highlight, but they did release math, science, and reading. And what we did is we compared ourselves to our like-minded, so we like size. So you have the state average here, so this here is science, but you can take a look at reading, math, and science, and all, also these along here, board pack, but. So what you'll see is we don't worry. Let's not do that. Anyways, oh, that's the end. Yeah, so if you look at this, what we did is we used like groups, Esco, Perum, Dan, Luverne, Pine Island. Remember that's the work with Julie Critts identifying the like twelve or like ten? We included the state, we also included Glacial Hills, just because they serve as kids here, so you can see overall of our test scores. So I'll share that with you. You know, it's one dipstick, but I would say consistently, our results went up. And I think that allows a tribute to our staff and our team, our curriculum work. We have some work to do in science.
We just added new curriculums, so.
We just bought new curriculums, so we'll see where that goes, but I would share that out tonight, that I think that's really important for all board members to see that achievement actually went up, what a lot of people are saying about big learning gaps across our country. And then, the other thing I didn't share out is, I sent this person out to me, but we did post for two full-time subs, and it's just, we actually saved money, you know, by hiring two full-time subs for interviews for today.
They're next Tuesday.
I'm sorry, next Tuesday, so, we'll bring that to the next meeting, so. There you go. And now we have two applications, unfortunately for two positions. Well, they, we know them, and they did well for us in the past, so.
Good?
Yeah. They're in one, two slots.
All right.
The first reading, yeah?
There's no action on this.
There was no action. So now it's the superintendent evaluation. I think I'm supposed to do this first. Yeah, we closed the meeting for that. Okay, there you go. Are we recording this recording? Yeah, I record it so you can actually go.
No, we got to stop.
Stop that. We got to stop that. Then you have to, you have to. We got to stop that. Then you have to, you have to make a declaration to go to the full session.